The McLean Mill Steam Donkey was lovingly restored in 2008 by a group of Industrial Heritage Society volunteers, most of them veterans of the woods themselves and for whom the restoration project became... The McLean Mill Steam Donkey was... ...lovingly restored in 2008 by a group of Industrial Heritage Society volunteers. The McLean Mill Steam Donkey was lovingly restored in 2008 by a group of Industrial Heritage Society volunteers, most of them veterans of the woods themselves and for whom the restoration project became a genuine labor of love. Central to the yarding operation is the spar tree, a single massive tree that's been left standing, its limbs removed, and rigging added, acting as the anchor for the donkey to work on. The steam whistle is vitally important. It offers the only real communication...
All right, welcome everyone. We will call to order our committee of the whole meeting. Got that echo happening again. That's better. I think it stopped.
Nope, it's still there.
It's there a little. It's minor. We'll continue on. Before we start, we will acknowledge and recognize that we work, live, and play in the city of Port Alberni, which is situated on the unceded territories of the Sichot and Hoopacassett First Nations, and we're grateful for that. Counsel, are there any late items to add to our agenda? None? Any late items from our corporate officer?
No late items.
This pen for nothing today. All right. Would somebody like to move approval of our agenda? Moved by Counsel Solder, seconded by Counsel Mealy. On the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. And on to adoption of minutes. We have minutes from the meeting held at 6:00 PM on February 18th, 2025. Moved to adopt by Counsel Solder, seconded by Counsel Dame. Seeing no comments on the minutes, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Next is public input period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the committee. Up to six speakers for up to five minutes each can be accommodated, and for anyone participating electronically, please use the raise your hand feature if you would like to participate. Marcy, I see you there. You're a delegation, so no need to raise your hand at this point. Wonderful. Would any members of the public like to speak today? Come on forward. Yeah, and if you want to come, just to the microphone, turn it on, and then just introduce yourself with your name, please.
Just this button here. Oh, yeah. Hi, my name's Jayden. I was just reading the official community plan and the updated zoning maps from 2024 for May and November. I'm sure there's a lot of cog still in motion, but it looks like the McQuinnah Trail is still fully zoned as future residential, and I'm sure you all know that there's a vast network of hiking and biking trails in there. It connects to Bird Street, and yeah, I'd just love to get some more information on that as the community plan develops in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. The McQuinnah Trails are fantastic trails in this community that we're very lucky to have, so really appreciate your comments. Our Director of Development Services is here, and he's leading the project on the OCP. So I'm not sure, Scott, if you want to, if you have any just kind of next steps on OCP that you could share just for a moment. I know this isn't really back and forth, but you know, we have a new person at our council meeting, so always nice to give information.
Most certainly. So the city has been working on a new official community plan for some time. The current one is substantially out of date. We are making good progress, even though it's taken longer than we had hoped to, on a draft OCP that will come back to senior management, council, and then there will be a public engagement process. And that really does look about how the future of the community is going to look or engrow over the next 20 years. There probably is some information on what we heard when we did some public engagement last year, but that document will come forward for further public engagement. And then, of course, there is a very formal adoption process that council has to do because the OCP has to be adopted as a bylaw. But I'd be pleased to connect with you outside of this at any time to answer any questions or to, but please stay tuned. That will certainly be coming to public engagement, but don't hesitate to reach out to us in the interim.
That's great. And just for my own interest, if there are people who want to follow the OCP process so they can ensure that they don't miss it when it comes to council meetings, like, what's the best way to do that?
Once we've got a draft document, we will be laying out a further engagement strategy for council to consider, so that will then be well-known, how that further engagement is going to occur for the public and for council.
Yeah, through the chair, you can also go, the most recent information is on Let's Connect at Port Alberni, and the reports Scots are talking, but will be uploaded on to that once they come to council.
Yeah, so that website is letscconnectpa.ca. So definitely follow on there, and, but it will come to council meeting multiple times still for input, and we're hearing your input here as well, and I've certainly heard that from other people in the community, that those are really valued trails. So thanks for that, and thanks for coming to our meeting. Of course. Are there other members of the public who would like to provide comments? Okay, then we'll move on to our delegations. Item number one is from the Western Vancouver Island Industrial Heritage Society. We've got Ron Corbial in attendance to present with others.
All right, we got some teamwork here. I buggered up my knee today, so I probably need some help. So I'm Ron Corbial, 2406 Sixth Avenue. I'm the President of the Western Vancouver Island Industrial Heritage Society, and I'm here today to discuss with council that the feasibility, the possibility, and hopefully we can jointly work together to reestablish... If it wasn't for my knee, that would never have happened. Maybe go to the first slide and, well, okay. Anyway, so hopefully to, as a jointly, we can reestablish what was once a pretty neat tourist attraction in the Alberni Valley. It's about this time I'd like to talk about the history, which I will shortly. Okay, here we go. Oh, perfect. So JJ Logging, named after Jack James. I imagine most of you know Jack. He was a real icon as far as the logging community goes in the Alberni Valley. Jack passed away in 2021. The Steam Donkey originally was built for the, well, rebuilt for the Expo 86 Steam Show, that along with the two spot, and I'm not sure about the steam tractor, but Port Alberni had a contingent of steam at Expo 86. It was around 2008 to 2010, the Steam Donkey was again redone by volunteers. The sled was built, and the logging show was started in 2010. Click. There we go. There's Dave telling the fans what's going on. So from about 2010 through to 2016, pardon me, 2016, they held three, some, two, sometimes three shows a week, and after the train stop going out to McLean's Mill, it was more once a week, sometimes twice in the summer. And really, since about 2019, I think those years, there was some extreme events as far as warm summers go, the Steam Donkey didn't run hardly at all. And then, of course, COVID came along, and I think it's really only run once since COVID, and that was in 2021. There was a special event for, as a memorial for Jack James. Its location is... There we go. So I'm sure everybody's pretty familiar with the McLean's Mill out Smith Road, and the location where it is now, that's not where it originally was. In 2010, when it first started, it was closer to the actual mill, but in 2014, Cisoxus Creek was realigned, so the logging show was moved about 50 meters northeast of the original spot. It started with a standing tree. Of course, when they moved, they had to rig a tree. And to get a little bit more specific to where it's located... Here we go. This has kind of been one of the bugaboos. We're right on the border of the mosaic boundary. As you can see, probably where the spar tree is, sits on city property. I think where the Steam Donkey sits is steam, is city property. Loader actually sits on mosaic property, and the logs are yarded, if you look at that map, they're yarded from right to left, so they're on the mosaic lands, which kind of is complicated things as far as what we need in regards to insurance or environmental coverage, those sort of things. So when I first started talking about this again, I was asked to maybe show a little bit of what the logging show looks like. Some of the people on council and management probably never did see this thing run, so I took about two and a half, three minutes of a video that was done by Darren Evans and Nancy Wilmot and condensed it down, so it'll just give you a flavor for what the Steam Donkey show looked like. So if we could get that rascal going.
The McLean Mill Steam Donkey was lovingly restored in 2008 by a group of Industrial Heritage Society volunteers, most of them veterans of the woods themselves and for whom the restoration project became a genuine labor of love. Central to the yarding operation is the spar tree, a single massive tree that's been left standing, its limbs removed, and rigging added, acting as the anchor for the donkey to work on. The steam whistle is vitally important. It offers the only real communication between the Steam Donkey operator and the crew in the bush. The arder operator holds his crew at the ready until they hear the first pull. The starting signal is one long, indicating that the cables will begin to move and the rigging will be sent out to the crew waiting with the log. Once the cable has been paid out its entire length, the whistle sounds again with one short pull, indicating that the choker man and rigging sligger are cleared to set the chokers or attach the cable to the log. When the two logs that will be yarded in are secure, the crew retreats a safe distance, and the whistle punk signals three short pulls, indicating that the donkey will begin to bring in the logs. The winches reverse, and the main line begins to return to the spar. Once they're in position, the chaser uses hand signals to drop the turn, then steps up to unhook the logs. The original Hayes Anderson logging truck owned by the McLean Sawmill rolls into possession, and the crew springs into action, and the operator pulls the heel boom over the log pile in the land. The head loader signals where he wants the log to go and when the operator should lower the log. The forest to the sawmill is nearly over, and the final destination today for these logs harvested, yarded, and loaded is the log dump at the McLean Mill Mill Pond. The truck moves into position, the load released, and with one mighty splash, these logs are ready to begin another journey through the sawmill blades and ready to be shipped around the world as Canadian lumber.
I got to point out that second loader that's on top of the truck, we don't do that anymore. That video was done, I think, in about 2013 or something like that. So what we need in order to reestablish this event from the city, I think we really need just an agreement so we can start the process of getting this thing underway, and we need the communication with Mosaic. Seems like they will only communicate with the city. From the Heritage Society, there's a lot we have to do, and I can tell you right up front, the first thing we'd probably do is have that spar tree inspected, and I know I'll talk to the guys, they've asked the inspector, or they're going to ask the inspector if he's willing to do it again. As you can see, if, right at the very top of that tree, that was the inspection last year, so there's a bit to that. If the spar tree's good to go, then we can move on. We've looked into the insurance. It's probably, I think, going to be between $1,300 and $1,500. We need to make sure the Steam Donkey's okayed. We have to replace a couple guidelines, and we've got to implement the review that was done by ORCA, and even our insurance. When I talked to the insurer, they said, you know, you're going to have to have a safety management plan. You're going to have to have a plan to ensure that the spectators and the fellows on the logging site are safe. So there's a little bit to it as far as safety goes, but I think it's doable. This has been really a very frustrating ride. It seems like every year we've attempted to get something up and running, and something has gotten our way. This year, we're maybe starting early enough that if we can get an agreement with the city, and then we can start to check the boxes, maybe this summer we can do it. I know talking to the folks at McLean's Mill, Richard for one, Elliot, they'd be very excited about seeing this go again, and they would support us and take tickets and any of that kind of stuff. So I think that's pretty much it, isn't it? One last slide. That says? Thank you. And, thank you. Where'd it go? Anyways, so thank you, and if there's any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Thank you very much for that, Ron. Great presentation, and nice to see some of that video footage. Are there questions or comments from council? Counsel Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for coming, Mr. Corbial. Just, I guess, to staff, the communication with Mosaic, what does that look like? What is needed? Are we facilitating, or are we actually representing the group while we go to Mosaic?
Thanks for the question. So I did reach out to Mosaic earlier. Again, it's the same as last year. Mosaic would enter into agreement with ourselves, but again, they have moved on the environmental coverage because of the activities that would be performed on their land. Again, so they have to see the agreement, and MIA-ABC needs to see both draft agreements before we can move forward with an agreement with IHS. So currently, Mosaic has given us the tentative green light, but wants to see what the agreement curtails, and we also provided them the video that Mr. Corbial there gave to us. So we've sent all the information that IHS has provided us to date that would form part of an agreement to MIA-ABC, and we're just waiting to hear back from them.
Thank you. Other comments? Counsel Verbergi?
Just want to mention that I visited IHS a few weeks back and was very impressed with the equipment they had there, and seeing the video here brought back lots of memories, and watching the water bombers leave a couple, twice, it was quite sad, and I'd hate for this stuff to disappear also. I feel anything we can do to keep it here would be good.
Thank you. Counsel Solder?
So, Ron, you're asking, your ask is communication with Mosaic, but the other part is funds. Is that correct? $1,500 up to $1,500?
I'm hoping we can do it ourselves, you know, by reaching out to our supporters. As I say, so far, I know it's somewhere between $1,300 and $1,500. If it becomes more than that, you know, that may make it difficult. So, you know, that's all part of the communication with Mosaic. You know, we've, I think the $1,300, $1,500 is liability insurance. I'm not sure what exactly we have to do to make sure that Mosaic's comfortable. So, you know, it's just the beginning of a fairly long procedure, I guess.
Okay, just to follow up, Madam Mayor. So you'll come back if you need some other financial helpers, something like that? Is that what we're saying?
I haven't really planned to, and hopefully we don't have to, but it's always a possibility, but yeah.
Okay, good enough, as long as you're fine and you're, you think you're doing fine, which is great.
Yeah, time will tell exactly, you know, what kind of monies are needed.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, and CAO, do you need a motion from us at this time, or we have previously supported this subject to there being an agreement in place and liability insurance? So I'm not sure if we need a new motion or not today.
That's correct. Through the chair, we don't need a motion at this time. What would happen is if we can finalize an agreement with IHS, then we would bring it forward to council to sign.
Wonderful. Well, thanks so much for the presentation today, Ron, and for the work that's been done so far. All right. Next, we will welcome up Dr. Enz.
Thank you very much, and really appreciate the invitation to come back. So this is part two of the report on the health of the population. So I'm Charmaine Enz, I'm the Medical Health Officer, and this is specifically a presentation as it relates to alcohol consumption harms and possible interventions, which I'm hoping is really practical for you. Next slide, please. Technology. Got to love it, right? There's no clicker. Kim's the clicker. Yeah. I could keep talking, but it's not as meaningful without the, without the, okay, great. We can, Kim, can you go to the next slide, please, or I'm going to get right into the content? Okay. Because we, I really want to spend at least half of this time, of these 10 minutes about policy and the optional, and the practicalities for council, but just in order to inform the reason why, we need to talk about consumption, and consumption is directly related to harms. So you saw this slide last time for the population age 15 and over, so that includes a population that isn't even of legal drinking age yet. The average consumption per week within Alberni Clackwood is 15...
And the crew in the bush. The yarder operator holds his crew at the ready until they hear the first pull. The starting signal is one long, indicating that the cables will begin to move and the rigging will be sent out to the crew waiting with the log. Once the cable has been paid out its entire length, the whistle sounds again with one short pull, indicating that the choker man and rigging sligger are cleared to set the chokers or attach the cable to the log. When the two logs that will be yarded in are secure, the crew retreats a safe distance and the whistle punk signals three short pulls, indicating that the donkey will begin to bring in the logs. The winches reverse and the mainland begins to return to the spot. Once they're in position, the chaser uses hand signals to drop the turn, then steps up to unhook the log. The original Hayes Anderson logging truck owned by the McLean Sawmill rolls into possession and the crew springs into action. Begins to move and the operator pulls the heel boom over the log pile in the land. The head loader signals where he wants the log to go and when the operator should lower the log. The course to the sawmill is nearly over. And the final destination today for these logs harvested, yarded, and loaded is the log dump at the McLean Mill mill pond. The truck moves into position, the load released, and with one mighty splash, these logs are ready to begin another journey through the sawmill blades and ready to be shipped around the world as Canadian lumber.
I got to point out that second loader that's on top of the truck, we don't do that anymore. That video was done, I think, in about 2013 or something like that. So what we need in order to reestablish this event from the city, I think we really need just an agreement so we can start the process of getting this thing underway. And we need the communication with Mosaic. Seems like they will only communicate with the city. From the Heritage Society, there's a lot we have to do. And I can tell you right up front, the first thing we'd probably do is have that spar tree inspected. And I know, talked to the guys, they've asked the inspector, or they're going to ask the inspector if he's willing to do it again. As you can see, if, right at the very top of that tree, that was the inspection last year. So there's a bit to that. If the spar tree's good to go, then we can move on. We've looked into the insurance. It's probably, I think, going to be between thirteen and fifteen hundred dollars. We need to make sure the steam donkey's okayed. We have to replace a couple guidelines. And we've got to implement the review that was done by ORCA. And even our insurance, when I talked to the insurer, they said, you know, you're going to have to have a safety management plan. You're going to have to have a plan to ensure that the spectators and the fellows on the logging site are safe. So there's a little bit to it as far as safety goes. But I think it's doable. This has been really a very frustrating ride. It seems like every year we've attempted to get something up and running and something has gotten our way. This year, we're maybe starting early enough that if we can get an agreement with the city and then we can start to check the boxes, maybe this summer we can do it. I know, talking to the folks at McLean's Mill, Richard for one, Elliot, they'd be very excited about seeing this go again and they would support us and take tickets and any of that kind of stuff. So I think that's pretty much it, isn't it? One last slide. That says? Thank you. Thank you. Where'd it go? Anyways, so thank you. And if there's any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Thank you very much for that, Ron. Great presentation and nice to see some of that video footage. Are there questions or comments from council? Councilor Mealy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for coming, Mr. Corbial. Just, I guess, to staff, the communication with Mosaic, what does that look like? What is needed? Are we facilitating or are we actually representing the group while we go to Mosaic?
Thanks for the question. So I did reach out to Mosaic earlier. Again, it's the same as last year. Mosaic would enter into agreement with ourselves. But again, they have moved on the environmental coverage because of the activities that would be performed on their land. Again, so they have to see the agreement. And MIA BC needs to see both draft agreements before we can move forward with an agreement with IHS. So currently, Mosaic has given us the tentative green light but wants to see what the agreement curtails. And we also provided them the video that Mr. Corbial there gave to us. So we've sent all the information that IHS has provided us to date that would form part of an agreement to MIA BC and we're just waiting to hear back from them.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilor Verbergi?
Just want to mention that I visited IHS a few weeks back and was very impressed with the equipment they had there. And seeing the video here brought back lots of memories and watching the water bombers leave a couple twice, it was quite sad. And I'd hate for this stuff to disappear also. I feel anything we can do to keep it here would be good.
Thank you. Councilor Solder?
So, Ron, your ask is communication with Mosaic, but the other part is funds. Is that correct? Fifteen hundred, up to fifteen hundred dollars?
I'm hoping we can do it ourselves, you know, by reaching out to our supporters. As I say, so far I know it's somewhere between thirteen and fifteen hundred dollars. If it becomes more than that, you know, that may make it difficult. So, you know, that's all part of the communication with Mosaic. You know, I think the thirteen, fifteen hundred is liability insurance. I'm not sure what exactly we have to do to make sure that Mosaic's comfortable. So, you know, it's just the beginning of a fairly long procedure, I guess.
Okay. Just to follow up, Madam Mayor. So you'll come back if you need some other financial helpers, something like that? Is that what we're saying?
I haven't really planned to and hopefully we don't have to, but it's always a possibility. But, yeah.
Okay. Good enough. As long as you're fine and you think you're doing fine, which is great.
Yeah, time will tell exactly, you know, what kind of monies are needed.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. And CAO, do you need a motion from us at this time? Or we have previously supported this, subject to there being an agreement in place and liability insurance? So I'm not sure if we need a new motion or not today.
That's correct. Through the chair, we don't need a motion at this time. What would happen is if we can finalize an agreement with IHS, then we would bring it forward to council to sign.
Wonderful. Well, thanks so much for the presentation today, Ron, and for the work that's been done so far. All right. Next, we will welcome up Dr. Enz.
Thank you very much and really appreciate the invitation to come back. So this is part two of the report on the health of the population. So I'm Charmaine Enz. I'm the medical health officer. And this is specifically a presentation as it relates to alcohol consumption harms and possible interventions, which I'm hoping is really practical for you. Next slide, please. Technology. Got to love it, right? There's no clicker. Kim's the clicker. I could keep talking, but it's not as meaningful without the, without the, okay, great. We can, Kim, can you go to the next slide, please? Or I'm going to get right into the content. Okay. Because we, I really want to spend at least half of this time, of these ten minutes about policy and the practicalities for council. But just in order to inform the reason why, we need to talk about consumption and consumption is directly related to harms. So you saw this slide last time for the population age fifteen and over. So that includes a population that isn't even of legal drinking age yet. The average consumption per week within Alberni Claquett is fifteen point three drinks, standard drinks per week. So this is higher than the rest of Island Health or BC average, and this is an increasing trend upwards. Next slide, please. So in 2023, Canada released its new guidance on alcohol and health, and it was to put into perspective the impacts of consumption on individual harm, especially as it relates to disease, disease progression, and cancer, which is not largely understood by the drinking population. There is unfortunately still a lot of naivety about that alcohol is a carcinogen. So in essence, the guidance says if you don't drink at all, there's no risk to these alcohol-related diseases. But if you drink seven or more drinks per week, you have an increasingly high rate of likelihood of diseases and cancer. And I just want to put this in perspective to say, we're talking about individual harm here to the person who consumes, not the indirect harms that result from people who drink to the other people around them. So this is just part of the story. So what this said, when we look now on the new Canada's guidance on alcohol and health and compare it to the drinking population within British Columbia, over half of British Colombians in the drinking age population are in the increasingly high-risk category. This story is very similar to what we saw with tobacco. A lot of denial, it's not a problem, a lot of promotion, but the disease progression takes a long time with tobacco. The acute effects of alcohol, of course, are much more immediate than what we'll ever see with tobacco. So my bottom line, my recommendation from these guidelines is if you're a person who consumes alcohol, to drink less. It's not about a magic number. It's just if you drink less, you're going to have less impact on your health. Next slide, please. So for Alberni West Coast, the substance use disorder, the rate of substance use disorder has increased forty percent over the last twenty years. Substance use disorder includes all psychoactive substances, but it's primarily made up of alcohol. And if you get more specific to alcohol use disorder, I unfortunately don't have that statistic for this area, so it's much harder to tease out. But for British Columbia, ten percent of the adult population has an alcohol use disorder. Ten percent of us. So next slide, please. And unfortunately, this slide is out of date. It's just to give you a demonstration of how hospitalizations for alcohol are on an increase. And this here is for this local health area. So that's the two hospitals in West Coast and Tofino compared to hospital admissions for tobacco or for opioids. So it's an increasing trend up for alcohol, decreasing trend down for tobacco. Next slide, please. And you saw this slide last time when I was here last month. And it's just to show the light purple is the rate of hospitalizations for local citizens within West Coast or Port Alberni to one of our two hospitals within the region for alcohol. And then the dark purple is that same rate of hospitalizations for alcohol in the rest of the island. And then the two lighter bars are hospital admissions for opioids. And the bottom line from this slide to take home is that within the West Coast here in Port Alberni, the hospital admissions for alcohol compared to opioids is fifty-three times higher. Next slide, please. And the death rate from alcohol is the pointy end of our indicators. And you can see for Alberni Claquett, it's fifty per hundred thousand population compared to the rest of BC, which is thirty-three. Next slide. So that was just to demonstrate some of the, I'm not making it up, about health impacts for individuals. Again, that doesn't capture the essence of the harms that go throughout the rest of society and to families and individuals. Part of the problem, of course, is the normalization of alcohol has been so intense for so long. And there's been significant effort to make it an individual issue instead of a societal issue. And also continuing arguments about it's an economic advantage to have alcohol. I want to just show you this one slide to say it's actually not. We're losing money hand over fist as it relates to alcohol. And it's, this is from 2020. This is specific for British Columbia. We generated just over $2 billion from alcohol sales, but as a society, it cost us 2.8 billion. We lost a cool $768 million that year in terms of costs versus revenue generation. Next slide. So Port Alberni, I understand that alcohol is important within the community, within any community, especially when they're tourist-based. And just to put in context, Port Alberni has forty-nine licensed establishments. You have seven licensee retail, two catering licensed, two licensed caterers. You have three small producers. You should get quite a bit of access. That's bottom. That's what I'm trying to say. Get quite a bit of access. And I know that there's, you know, you want to build and foster your tourism industry. It's really important. I'd say we actually have more to advertise in alcohol on the West Coast. We have a lot of fantastic, spectacular things we should be promoting and advertising. And just to say that the alcohol within the community and alcohol policies are balanced against the community harms and safety. So it can't be an either-or conversation. They both need to be included, both perspectives, and more perspectives as you bring people into that discussion. Next slide, please. So community action. So this is, we get down to what can we do about it? So as we have more and more deregulation by the province and by federal and provincial bodies, there's even more power and importance on local governments and municipalities because you do have a lot of power as it relates to alcohol control policies. And you have the ability to innovate and develop policies that are specific for the needs of your community, that focuses on the things you can do, not the things you can't do, and that you can actually start to set a new normal for what's important in your community as it relates to alcohol. So I'm going to quickly touch on some of those policies. But I also want to, for those listening who aren't part of local government, to say as a community member, you have a say. And you need to inform and be informing and be participating in the conversation about what's important for you to have a social and community life that's healthy and supportive. The other thing I just wanted to mention, and I didn't talk about it in the consumption, I forgot, but is there's a significant amount of binge drinking in the population. And why is that important? Binge drinking has lots of health implications, but it's especially important for our young people and for adolescents. And binge drinking, the impacts on the brain with binge drinking are different than normal consumption drinking. And it has lasting effects over the trajectory of a young person's life, especially as it relates to memory, attention, cognitive functions, doesn't set up people to succeed in life. So even more important that we take community action as it relates to our young people. Next slide, please. So the paradox of prohibition, I just quickly have to let you know about this. I love this slide. I could spend my whole time on this slide. I'm not going to. But the bottom line, the X-axis is the degree of regulation with at the far end being it's illegal, it's illegal, so there's no regulation, except that it's illegal. And the other end of is it's legal and we don't regulate very much or none at all. The Y-axis, the axis going up and down, is the degree of harm. And then the colored dots are the different psychoactive substances. So I just really want to compare what it means to look at those psychoactive substances based on the amount of regulation we have on them. And the sweet spot is where you want the least harm, which is the bottom of that curve. And that's where we have cannabis. It's tightly, it's legal and it's tightly regulated. When we have prohibition, it's not allowed, we have significant harms. You can see that for our toxic drug crisis. At the other end of the extreme, where it's legal, but you don't regulate very much and it's so normalized and celebrated, you have a lot of harm. And so the toxic drug crisis and alcohol are two ends of the extreme, and they both cause significant harm. But you can see on the paradox of prohibition curve that alcohol is even higher for harms than it is from the opioid crisis. So this is just to say, policy is the tool that makes the primary difference to modify alcohol, to prevent and modify alcohol harms. Next slide, please. So the red, what's in red is what municipalities can regulate. So for access and availability, you have, you can do a lot of managing this through density and zoning and restricting, and this is in your domain. Hours of entertainment, restrictions on delivery services, and hours of alcohol sales. Those are all within the control of municipalities. Next slide. For social norms, health and safety messaging, the presence in and restriction at events, we'll come to that with municipal alcohol policies, marketing and advertising. What do you allow for sponsorship and so, advertising? Next slide. Enforcements, business license revocation, bylaw enforcement, new business license and surveillance. Next slide. So the three big levers that you have as a municipal government are with the least amount of efforts and the least amount of impact, but to high effort and high impact is the municipal alcohol policy. This is about your places, your space, your buildings, your events, the LCRB application review, and a community action alcohol strategy. And I'm just going to quickly touch on each of them in one slide each. So next slide. So the municipal alcohol policy, this is where municipalities have a policy about how alcohol is involved or not as it relates to their property, their events, their buildings. And it was initially introduced as something to manage your liability as a municipality. So quite a few communities have done municipal alcohol policies. I've listed three on the bottom that have done it well. And in your notes section of the PowerPoints, there's more information in there. But District of Tofino did one in 2018, very inclusive, community-minded. And this is a really beginning place to start, is a municipal alcohol policy. That would be my first recommendation. It would be to start with a municipal alcohol policy. Next slide. The LCRB application review, you have an opt-in, opt-out when there's business license applications. Most many communities are just saying, we're opting out. LCRB, you make the decision. I think this is a lost opportunity for communities. And by having a policy that say we are going to opt-in, gives you a chance to review, so you know what's coming and what it means. But also, it opens up the opportunity for neighbors or impacted citizens to have a say, because without you opting in, they don't have a say. So I really think at minimum, we all should opt-in so we know what's coming and what it means. And then you can actually expand the LCRB application to that policy to create, to something larger in terms of some evaluation criteria that you want staff to review with every application. And there's, again, three regions that have LCRB application review processes. Next slide. And lastly is the community alcohol strategy. This just takes it up one more level higher, which is more comprehensive, including the community and the values of the community, and gives it opportunity for a buy-in in terms of what's important for us and how are we going to denormalize alcohol within our community. And there's Pemberton with the local First Nations have developed a really lovely community alcohol strategy. And I also just want to give a shout out to Tofino through the leadership of Councilor Steer, who have, the council has just approved a notice of motion to move forward on a community alcohol strategy. So it's gone to staff to come up with some options. Next slide. So the key message is consumption is increasing, consumption's directly related to harm, and the harm goes beyond the individual who consumes. If we had our enforcement and policing partners here, they would be able to attest to that. Evidence-based alcohol policies are by far the most effective way to reduce harms from alcohol. We have the capacity to help support you if you want to work on any of that. And again, my recommendation would be to start with a municipal alcohol policy and to opt-in on liquor license applications. And just one last thing is because I've had similar conversations in Tofino and Yukulit. So if there's, I don't know what the larger regional district would feel like if I got a regional strategy, maybe as something worth considering as well. So thank you so much for having me back. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming back so quickly because when I heard your last presentation, particularly the alcohol part, really stuck out to me. I think that we all, we all are very aware, obviously, of the challenges that exist in the Alberni Valley. And I think we're all very aware of the harm that exists when people are, you know, deep in an addiction to alcohol. However, there's so little awareness about the harm that comes from casual drinking. So some of the numbers that you shared were really surprising to me. And we recently had a couple of, we are opted in to be in the process, but we obviously can opt out on individual bases. And we recently had a couple of applications that we just really didn't know what to do on because we don't have a municipal alcohol policy. And we just, I think, didn't really know what our role was in that sense, to take a firm stance on something that felt somewhat outside of our level of knowledge and understanding. So they were minor changes, but we did opt out for those. I think it was at least one application we opted out on. And so it was quite timely to have your presentation and appreciate you coming back because these things will continue to come to us. And I would love to see us move toward a municipal alcohol policy, especially if there's potentially support available to work on it alongside Viham.
Absolutely. Happy to do that. I think just like we don't have the same awareness of the health impacts, especially cancer, the carcinogenic effects of alcohol, I also not sure local government fully appreciates the amount of power you have. Because I do hear local governments saying, no, that's, we can't do that. That's, we're not, we can't, we can't tell you, you can't be open. Yeah, you can. You have that authority. So that's why I wanted to make sure I included those sections in red because sometimes people aren't aware of the amount of impact they can have.
No, absolutely. That's super helpful. Comments or questions? How would council feel about a recommendation to council that we direct staff to bring back a draft, to work with Island Health and bring back a draft municipal alcohol policy?
I'll move that.
As a starting point. Moved by Councilor Solder, seconded by Councilor Mealy. Any discussion? Seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Carrie's none opposed. Thank you.
You made my day.
Yeah, no. Thank you so much for coming. Really helpful information and look forward to working with you on that.
Thank you very much. Okay.
All right. Council, we will go to our last delegation today. Relevant, probably. We have the Alberni Claquett Health Network, Marcy Dewitt in attendance to present on activities. Welcome, Marcy.
Excellent. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. Sorry that I cannot be in person with you, but I am zooming in from home, I am in Yukul Flat Territories here in Yukulit. Weather has been rather marge-ish, so didn't want to risk the evening trip on the highway. But I'm here to talk to you a little bit tonight about the Alberni Claquett Health Network. We typically aim to do a presentation to local councils at least once a year. And unfortunately, last year was exceptionally busy. So this will be our 2023, 2024 kind of report back. And it looks like my slides have just disappeared. Get those back and move on to the next one. We could go to the next slide?
They're just moving a bit slow, but it will, it will change in a moment.
All right. Great.
Yeah, it did work last time. Maybe just hold for a moment, Marcy, and we'll just take a quick look at it. Thanks.
There we go. All right. Excellent. So a brief little synopsis of the Health Network. We were formed in about 2011, 202012, and officially really got our funding and started working a little bit in 2012 to 2014. Since 2015, we've been working very closely with local communities, funded through Island Health with an agreement for the Alberni Claquett Regional District to hold our funds. So we did a lot of kind of initial development in our early stages, assessing out how we were going to work and what that was going to look like. And then in 2015 till now, the last decade, we have been working very closely with the communities of the Alberni Claquett, including all municipalities, the regional districts, electoral areas, and the ten neutral stations. So on to our next slide. Perfect. We are tasked with addressing the social determinants of health. So though many of those things of health. So though many of those things that impact our health, our health indexes that I know Charmaine has spoken to you about recently, but those pieces that are outside of our health system. So we're looking at poverty reduction, we're looking at access to services, and the ways that we can really build healthy communities. And coincidentally, these very much intersect with local government levers and kind of pieces of, pieces of work that local government often take on. Go to the next slide. So through the ACHN, in the last 10 years, we've really refined how we're working. And we address the social determinants of health with their one staff person, which is me, part-time. But we have a leadership table in which we pull people from the region to the table to discuss, help lead, inform, and communicate both ways, both directions. We also have action tables, who we pull in key members of the community to discuss, move forward and assist in planning specific projects and planning, kind of planning pieces. So a great example of that is our West Coast Transportation Working Group. And we also support a variety of different action tables that are already in existence. So working with other networks and other very functional tables in our region, just to ensure that we have good information flow within our kind of overall community. And then outside of that, we really just look at the different ways that we network, both within our kind of specific region throughout Vancouver Island, the province, and throughout Canada. So we have a good network of networks in which we have the ability to work on policy and move forward, move forward items outside of, outside of our realm. And then working with community, we are always doing community engagement and looking at different ways that we can get information into our processes and back out into community. So you'll just see here a quick list of our 2025 table of partners. That is constantly kind of shifting and changing a little bit. But we're always happy to say that we have great representation from all of our local municipalities and local governments, as well as some great leaders in the social and health realms throughout the region. Thank you. So as I mentioned, I'm here to speak to you a little bit today about the successes that we've seen and the work that we've been doing in 2023 and 2024, and get you up to date with what we're planning for 2025. So a lot of the work that we do is targeted to build awareness of and to build programs to create health in communities. We do this by bringing together community stakeholders, planning, identifying needs, and implementing, actually doing the project management for many of those projects, and then passing them off into community and hoping that they thrive. So I'm going to talk to you today about a couple of those opportunities that we've been quite busy with. And we'll go on to that next slide. So as I mentioned, our network development is one of the many ways that we are very, or we're able to do our work. So this model just ensures that we're connecting folks with the community data, lived experience and community stories, so that we have that ability to feed into our process and push that back out into our region, resourcing the different initiatives that we are planning with our various different partners. We can move on to the next slide. So poverty reduction has been one of our key priority areas. This was, I guess, solidified in 2018, but we really started working around poverty reduction in 2017. In 2022, we presented to council with our Poverty Reduction Action Plan. And then since then have leveraged additional funding from UBCM in order to develop a building equity toolkit. And we also did some equity workshops with a, which I believe many of those in the room were able to attend. So ensuring that community folk, or communities in, sorry, community members in the region had access to a lot of that information. And we'll be coming back with that building equity toolkit in the near future. Outside of that, our work in poverty reduction has really focused in on access being a central component to ensuring that folks have equity in the ways that they are able to access resources within our area. And then we've also done a lot of work around youth capacity building. So I'll speak a little bit to the access. And it's not quite as specific to the Alberni Valley, but a great success in the West Coast communities. Next slide, please. We've had a lot of success looking at access in the ways that folks are able to access groceries, transport, or education, employment, and in between, community services. So we've been working on this for quite some time, recognizing that it is a key piece of equity and poverty reduction, especially in our rural and remote communities. So earlier this month, we were able to celebrate BC Transit coming to the West Coast communities. So in a small region of 6,000 people, having a dedicated transit system seven days a week from seven o'clock till, I think, 11 o'clock now. So that's been a big piece of our work in the last little while, advocating for that, bringing in the community voice, and then supporting all of those processes. More specific to the Alberni Valley and other communities throughout the region, we were successful in working with Island Health to make sure that all of our communities in the region had access to the new non-emergency medical transportation program. So if you haven't seen that yet, I have posters. That was implemented last year when Wheels for Wellness and was kind of pulled out of our general region. And so it has been replaced with the non-emergency medical transport services, and are currently working with the ACID Transportation Committee in looking at different, different transportation needs within the region. So next slide. What kept us the busiest last year is our Communities Building Youth Futures Program. And so through this opportunity with some of our national partners in a national network that we belong to, we were approached to become part of this, or to receive funding for our region. So we were successful in securing over $700,000 for two years of youth capacity building activities. With that, we were able to push out a lot of funding into the communities for youth safe spaces, activities, harm reduction, supplies, and, and resources, as well as hiring a team of youth facilitators. So we had a youth facilitator in the West Coast, Alberni Valley, and in the Barclay communities. And so while that funding has come to an end, we were able to seed that, we were able to work with ADAPS and seed the Youth Boundary Centre. So looking at that being a Alberni Valley and West Coast satellites program, and ensuring that ongoing youth programming was happening in youth safe spaces. So each one of those youth safe spaces in the Alberni, a few on the West Coast and one in the Barclay Sound have been maintained and will be continuing. Next slide, please. And moving on to our strategic plan. So we just ratified this late in 2024, and we're moving forward with a little bit more focus. So continuing our focus on network development, we wanted to make sure that we were, I guess, better defining how we wanted to communicate and do outreach into our communities. And then ensuring that we had more focus on poverty reduction and clarifying the recommendations in the 2022 Action Plan. So next slide, please. So what we'll be doing for 2025 is really looking at pushing out that building equity toolkit. It's available on our website, as are all of the reports that I've mentioned today. We'll be looking at facilitating and supporting local health and social development coalitions and other working groups. And then I think most importantly to this presentation, we're looking at developing Poverty Reduction Action Plan data updates. As we know, 2022 data was a little bit challenging. We had old census information, and a lot has changed since then. So we want to make sure that we have the most recent data and nice one-pagers that we can use as baselines as we move forward with community partners on, on those shared recommendations around poverty reduction. So we'll go over to the, the next slide. As we do have an ask for once of the Alberta, City of Port Alberni Council. So we are requesting support in principle from council to complete the living wage calculation for the Alberni Valley. This is really vital information for the Poverty Reduction Action Plan. It's something that we based a lot of our work around income recommendations. And I've attached a bit of a snapshot there of the Klaikwatt Living Wage calculation. This isn't the most recent one, but it was my favorite visual that they produced, which really outlines the various different calculations that they take into consideration, including like childcare, transportation, cost of owning a car or two, and a variety of other different calculations that really assist in showing the value of a living wage, but also many of these programs that we as community advocates can assist to advocate and show importance for. All right. And I think my last slide is just, thank you very much. And love to hear your questions and comments.
Thank you so much, Marcy. Are there questions from council? Councillor Solder, and then councillor Mealy.
So the, so the ask is for support. Is that what you'd like for the living wage? And I agree with you. Minimum wage just doesn't cover it for rent or anything like that. And people are barely making it on a minimum wage. Not that the businesses, small businesses can afford to give over 20 bucks an hour right now. I mean, a lot of the small businesses are struggling, especially with what's happening in today's world. But it would be interesting to note what it would be. So I'm going to move that it to go to city council for and support in principle, the ACHN, to complete the living wage calculation for Port Alberni. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Solder, seconded by councillor Dame. And I'll go to councillor Mealy for next comment, or if you want to wait until after this. But sure. Okay. Any comments on this piece of the motion? Okay, seeing none on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you. And go ahead councillor Mealy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, that was one of my questions, just the direction on where we were going to go. The other one too, first of all, Mr. Whit, thank you very much for your, your presentation tonight. I do appreciate that. I just had a question. What, it says secured over $700,000 for two years of youth capacity building activities. Can you just educate me a little bit on what examples of youth capacity building activities are?
Yeah. So for our, for many of our youth capacity buildings activities, so I guess I mentioned the youth safe spaces. So those are actual physical locations that we were able to not only secure, but also outfit and ensure that there was facilitators and supplies for a minimum of six months. We've actually extended that funding through the Health Network itself, to ensure that that's going on for two more years now. We've also funded a variety of different programs throughout the region. So on the West Coast, I'm just trying to pick out a few examples. I think we had about $120,000 worth of asks from local organizations. There was a gardening program in the Alberni Valley. There was a surfing program on the West Coast. And there was a snorkel harvest program in the Barclay communities. So we actually asked many of the organizations that were applying to direct that towards employment, employability skills. So we had a lot of opportunities in that regard. And then our youth facilitators, so hiring that team of three folks, they were providing regular capacity building workshops to youth through the youth safe spaces, as well as building out a couple of youth mental health apps. So those are the ones that I can think of right now, but it was about a year ago and over two years.
Thank you very much. No, I appreciate that. I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I definitely just wanted some examples. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing none. Marcy, I want to really thank you for your time and for all the work that you're doing in the Alberni Klaikwatt Regional District. It's been, I know we heard a similar presentation at the regional district planning meeting recently. And it's always really helpful to get this insight. So appreciate you coming today.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to unfinished business. And item number one is the Business License Regulation Bylaw and Special Event Licenses, forwarded from the February 24, 2025 Regular Council Meeting. Welcome, Scott.
Thank you, Madam Chair and committee. So as you indicated, this council had passed a motion for staff to draft some changes to our business licensing bylaw specifically related to, to special events. So staff have, again, took a further look at some of the other municipal bylaws and had drafted some basic changes, including one is to introduce a definition of what a special event would incorporate within, in the city. And under that proposed definition, just wanted to let council know that the, the weekly markets at Harbour Key would not be required to get a special event license, and they would continue to operate under the License to Occupy agreements. The draft bylaw has distinguished between a nonprofit and a charitable organizations regarding fees. There are differences between those types of organizations. You know, a nonprofit can have a paid board. I do recall prior to the legalization of cannabis, there was a number of medical cannabis licenses trying to operate. And I remember being surprised that they were registered nonprofits, and their board were highly paid. And that's how they managed that. So currently, the draft bylaw does propose to have no fee for registered charities and a reduced fee of $75 per day for nonprofits. Now that's certainly, council has the option to, as some other municipalities have put both charitable and nonprofits as a no fee. So that's an option. But the current draft bylaw has made a distinguishment between, between those, those two. And of course, council could also, you know, the, the current fee for a for-profit special event is still at the 220, as previously provided to council that was on the higher end of things. So that, that hasn't changed in the draft bylaw, but certainly, certainly could on it. So they are relatively minor changes, but they would provide a lot more understandable, clear what a definition is, and that we would then move forward with those. So the recommendation is that they go forward to council for consideration of three readings of the draft amendment bylaw. And I'd be pleased to answer any questions or take direction on how council may wish to change the bylaw further.
Thank you. Questions? None? Would somebody like to move the motion? Councillor Petola.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That, I move that council direct administration to prepare changes to Business License Regulation Bylaw Number, oh, sorry. That's not the motion, is it? Sorry, that, the committee of the whole recommend council introduce and complete three readings of Business License Regulation Bylaw Number 4951-3.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Petola, seconded by councillor Dame. Seeing no comments still on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you very much, Scott. And moving on to item number two, Recreation Facility Lease Policy.
Thank you very much. So through the chair, I just wanted to, we brought the Recreation Facility Lease Policy forward. as it was referred for further discussion with a motion from the February 18th, 2025 report. I believe at the time, council was gonna, well, thinking about directing administration to create a new lease policy for recreation facilities. So we already had a policy that administration felt that would cover most of those items. So I did provide a copy of that on, on your desk today, and we also emailed it out to you. It's also can be found on our website as, as well, in that it is, has a lot of direction for administration. And again, currently, all leases come to council to be signed off anyway. So council would get a chance to review that. One of the common issues in, in the lease policy, though, is that staff does go for fair market value unless directed differently. So again, it's here for your consideration. If you would like us to make changes, add anything into the lease policy, or administration is up to whatever council would like to see done.
Thank you. Discussion from council? Councillor Dame.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will, I will make the motion for discussion. I move that the committee of the whole refer discussion of, on development of a recreational facility lease policy to a future committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you. Moved by councillor Dame, seconded by councillor Mealy. Seeing no comments on the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Thank you. Okay, so no staff reports, no correspondence, no new business. On to question period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions of the committee. And for anyone participating electronically, I don't think we have anyone left. You could use the raise your hand feature. Would any members of the public like to ask questions? Come on forward.
Just looking at this, the special events definition, and it does state on here, sorry, Joseph Luskosik live here in Port Alberni. Well, council mayor and those that are watching or intending. Yeah, it, it's just the definition, it's mentioning temporary event, which I, and I may be misunderstanding some things, but so I'm just going to clarify. Temporary event operates one to 10 days in a calendar year, including but not limited to festivals, concert performances, community celebrations, sports exhibits, trade shows, fair circus, carnival, or markets. So I'm wondering, with that coming in place and licensing being required, I know there's been passed, and maybe this has already been dealt with, but in the past, there was people from some of the community markets that take place at some of the different buildings where they have little crafts, Christmas stuff, that sort of thing. And I think there was concern about the vendors each having to require to have a license, rather than the overall licensing for the building that says we have a license for the event and everybody else is included in that. So just clarification on that.
Absolutely. Scott.
Most certainly. So in that event, if license is held by the event organizer, individual vendors would not be required to have their own license. Now, sometimes some of them do, because they have home occupations and things like this, but they wouldn't be required to have their own business license if they're covered under a special event license.
Great. So again, to clarify a little bit further. So during the Fall Fair, where I think a lot of the businesses that are, you know, contribute to the community were required to have a business license, and that was a bit of an issue. So again, this, as I say, because here, the, the key market, which is a weekly event, is not required to have, even though it's vendors selling and making a profit on it. But it's a community thing, and these other ones are community things also. So I'm just concerned that it's going to, if, if, if you're looking at this, please look into that, that for community things that bring people together and for local artisans or whatever, just doing something small, it's not a big profit for anybody, I'm sure. But it does bring the community together and Christmas time, different events, different things like that. So I don't know if that's included in, just looking and clarifying that as you look forward, as you're looking into this, just to, not to create things that make it hard for those little independents that are, that are there doing things. So that's only my only concern. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Go ahead.
One clarification I'd like to make, that would be a non-food vendor. If it's a food vendor, they are required to have their own individual business license and of course have to have approval from Island Health.
Thank you. Thanks for the questions. Okay, would somebody like to move adjournment? Moved by councillor Mealy, seconded by councillor Dame. On the motion, all in favor. Carried, none opposed. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.